With the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. It looks like we have all board members present. That's great. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which is the minutes from the August 28th bring to the board meeting and the August financials and accounts payable.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Support?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, public comments. Anybody wish to address the board? We have some public personnel. Committee report, financial.
We met just prior to this meeting. Kurt updated us and, yeah. We'll update the whole board on the ballot issues coming up and just the communication plan that is coming out. Absentee ballots will be going out next week, I believe it was.
I think this Thursday or Friday.
So you'll be seeing a lot of information and communication regarding the bond issue. We also reviewed the August financials in good depth. And credit cards, just the standard stuff. And that was it.
Thanks Steve. And academic affairs?
Yeah, we academic affairs met and we got an update on the great start to the year that we've had so far. Admin team update and an update on our partnership with the North Muskegon Police Department.
Thank you Carolyn. All right, presentation, presentations. But we've got a fourth grade trip to the Muskegon Sports Complex.
Mr. Allen, you want to introduce your team?
They actually don't want me involved.
Oh, okay. I'm just handing off to Ms. Fortmeyer and John's gonna stay out of her way.
He said push his button. There it is. So, I'm Terry Fortmeyer and my colleague Jen Baumann is here. We're fourth grade teachers here and have been for many, many years. And we used to go to Camp Pendleluon and then their prices went sky high and we lost some support of their staff out there to help us with programs. So we looked into a few years ago into the Muskegon Sports Complex at Muskegon State Park. And Dan Bonner, some of you might know him from the year 2005, he graduated. And he is the director out there and does a wonderful job. So on October, August 31st, we loaded up the bus and we took our fourth graders out there and that was the day before our long weekend. And it's right here. So we love that we're able to, we're able to enjoy the outdoors there. It's a great team building day for all of us. There's activities. And I'm gonna ask my two students to come on up, right here. Right up here and go ahead and introduce yourselves.
I'm Evelyn Jorri and I'm a mom because I'm scared.
Okay, and they're gonna tell you a little bit about our favorite activities, our activities.
The rock climbing. The rock climbing is something you are strapped to about and then there's a rope that helps you up and then you climb up and then when you reach the top, you can jump down or you can climb down. And why I liked it, I liked it because I've never gone rock climbing before and it was a good experience.
And what about the luge? What did you do there?
I just went in.
Yeah.
The luge is where it's kind of like two hockey sticks. Then there's a metal frame and there's skateboard wheels and a cushion and then you have to wear arm pads and a helmet.
I liked it because you kind of go down fast and it really depends on how much you weigh because if you weigh more, you go faster. And, um, yeah, you just hold on. Um, archery is, um...
What did you do with the archery?
Oh, you, um, you sweep fingers and you pull back to your mouth and then you release and, um, yeah.
Why I liked it, I liked it because...
Did you hit any targets?
Yeah.
What one?
I hit the bear target and my handle.
And that was unusual for a fourth grade, wasn't it?
Yeah. The nature hike is where we went down to the beach and had magazines and searched the sand for little iron grains.
I liked it because that summer I didn't get to go to the beach that much so I enjoyed going to the beach for a while. And, um, the games, um, there's all different kinds of games. There's four, if you don't know what it was, there's ping pong. There was, um, I think it's working, I don't...
Jenga?
Jenga. And there was like these pipes that is covered with wood and you try to balance yourself on it. And there was all different kinds of fun games.
What games did you like that's fun?
I liked the ping pong and the one where you had to balance it, um, on the plank.
So here's some pictures of the kids and this was a huge rock wall that they did. And so they worked hard at learning how to get up and then coming back down, rappelling back down. And here's the beach pictures and all some of the games. And the purpose again was for team building and for getting out and learning about the Muskegon State Park. And we heard a lot of the kids say that they couldn't wait to come back with their parents. So it was good advertising for the programs out there. And here's a picture of luge, the kids were doing the luge. And it is really fun. So many of them didn't want to even do it at first and then they saw their friends doing it and so they were ready to jump on board. Another reason, purpose for this field trip was for physical exercise and also being brave to try new things and yes, to wear them out before their long vacation. So one other thing that we really liked was they were very organized. They had the classes already set into groups when we got out there and then the workers were very accommodating for some of our special needs kids. And there was just success all around. It was just such a fun time. So anything else you guys want to add?
I think that's all.
Mr. Baumann, would you like to add anything?
I just want to say, I think I've been doing a first week field trip for maybe 20 years now. And my partners told me we were going on a field trip the first week of school when I first started fifth grade and I had a panic attack. Like I'm taking these kids into the woods on the first week. But I want to thank John and Kurt and the board that it's the most amazing way to start our first week. We get to know the kids, we get to know the parents and we just, we have a lot of fun and it's a beautiful way to get to see our beautiful city here.
So thank you for letting us present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very cool. Looks like you had a beautiful day out there and all works. It's nice, great. Next is the AED demonstration. We have a board member that is gonna be...
Well, I hope not to have to use it.
Not to use it.
But anyway, we were very fortunate this year to get two new AEDs. This is what it looks like and I'm not going to open it up and have it talk to you but we are going to see a video, a short video. The advantage of this AED is that you can press a button and have it be child friendly and then adult friendly. It also pretty much, you put the pads on and after that, the machine takes over and it'll even do a report. Kristy set that up today, thank you very much. She's more computer savvy than I am. But my goal is to have everyone in the school, staff wise, to be trained in CPR so that we are well taken care of in case anything like this should ever happen. Go ahead, guys.
Should it be sound?
I don't think so.
No sound?
Well, there's sound eventually.
Yeah.
Adult mode. Remove all clothing from patient's chest. Pull red handle to reveal pads. Look at pictures on pads. Apply pads to bare skin exactly as shown in the pictures. Press pads firmly. Do not touch patient. Analyzing heart rhythm. Everyone clear. Do not touch patient. Delivering shock. Shock delivered. Provide chest compressions to the beat. The heel of one hand should be in center of chest. The other hand should be on top of first hand. Push down hard at least two inches. Provide two breaths. One. Two. Resume chest compressions. Push down hard at least two inches. Provide two breaths. One. Two. Resume chest compressions. Push down hard at least two inches. Provide two breaths. One. Two. Resume chest compressions. Push down hard at least two inches. Provide two breaths. One. Two. Resume chest compressions. Push down hard at least two inches. Provide two breaths. One. Two. Resume chest compressions. Push down hard at least two inches. Stop chest compressions. Do not touch patient. Analyzing heart rhythm. Everyone clear. Do not touch patient. Delivering shock. Shock delivered. Resume chest compressions. Push down hard at least two inches.
The advantage we have here at North Muskegon is that we have a dozen AEDs on premise and the sports field and some cross country team takes one with them when they go. So we, they're out in the middle of nowhere when they run cross country. So it's nice to have, have as many as we do. I don't think there's any school in the state of Michigan that has as many as we do. And we don't have to worry about how far you'd have to run to get it to bring it back to the person who needs the shock. So I'm, I feel very safe. And I would hope everybody else does too. I'll get around to getting everybody trained. Because you can, you wouldn't be able, that lady did a really nice job. But what happens is, is that eventually you get really tired and when you get tired, your, your compressions aren't efficient. So we do what's called tag team CPR and that actually comes from the fire department. And you line up on either side of the body and one person's doing the compressions. And then when they get to about sixty, sixty compressions, they need a rest. And so then the next person would jump right in and take over. And just we'd go back and forth until everybody, until the person is revived or until medical EMS comes and takes over. Any questions at all?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Beattie.
Do you want to do the student?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, that's what I was gonna say. Do we want to introduce the, somebody want to introduce the student reps?
Sure. So our student reps, yeah. So our student reps today are here from our student council. So one of the ideas of the board retreat was to have different clubs come and represent each month. So we thought with all of the work that student council has been doing these last few weeks at the start of school, these two girls, Emily Lingard and Sage Brewer, are very active participants in all of the fun events for this week. They've been the ones organizing and spearheading and calling. And so we thought, why not let them share and they might even do a little plug for something they're trying to look for, maybe?
Yeah, we got them. I confirmed.
Oh, okay. Good. So there we go. I'll let you guys kind of talk about the start of the school year and what's coming up this week.
So, we're on student council, as Michelle said, and we're just preparing for the homecoming parade this week. I just confirmed our last two convert goals and all the things. And actually, if anybody here knows, if anybody here is like active in youth football, no? Yeah, I talked to you. I just, I talked to them. But that's all going well. Got dance stuff going.
Yeah, the dances pretty much all squared away. We've got the location, we've got times, we've got DJs, we've got decorations. All that's set up, the parade is pretty much matched. All that's needed are the people to show up at the right time, at the right place. And then we'll have a great meet leading up to it and a great game and, yeah, a lot of school spirit and it'll be lots of fun. We're excited.
What was the spirit beginning today?
Today was denim day.
Tomorrow's business casual, so I think you guys should all be marked.
Always exciting business.
Yeah, it's going really good. We're excited for our senior year.
Great. Thank you very much. New business, approval of the French trip.
Yep, in your packet you've got a letter from Yelac that gives us some general information but this isn't, isn't her first rodeo. So I know that she wants to get things rolling, doesn't necessarily have all of the details yet but she's looking for the go ahead to the board to do what she's done many, many times and provided our kids some incredible experiences. Thanks for being here also.
Thank you. Yes, so I'm planning on taking my group to France next June. And so this would be going back to what we did before COVID, as I mentioned in the letter. So that would be after school, leaving on June 20, I'm sorry, the 10th and coming back on France 6. So for those who have been, you know, I've had kids going to France with me. I did cut down the trip for one month to two weeks. Yes, I cannot do what I used to do anymore but I'm really happy to be able to go back to taking the kids to France on the, you know, language experience. What we did this year was wonderful. And actually, I will ask, you know, your permission for, at the upcoming, the board meeting, we'd like to share with you what we, what we saw. That was pretty amazing. But like we had talked to you about, you know, last year, I knew that there was going to be a very fun kind of trip, which was very good. But there was more culture. Not that this one is not going to be culture but the language was not the piece, language piece was not as strong because we were combined with other schools from California and Utah. So there was a lot of English spoken on the bus and, but still, the kids had a great time. It was a really wonderful experience. So, but that would be for another time we can present that to you. I have kids working on that, putting something together for you. But this one is going to be the exchange like we used to do with ten days, well, three days in Paris and then the rest family stay. And this is why you can tell the difference, that's why we can keep it as cheap as we can. Okay, that's the huge difference. This year, we won't be going through an organization. We are planning the details with my colleagues in France. We are planning the details of the week and I am planning the three days in Paris. So no more than $2,000. I already have the flights. Actually, I had to do it. The prices for June are pretty high but I was able to find a flight for about $1,200, which is pretty good for June. So I pre-reserved, I, yes, I had to do that. I had the deadline, so I preserved it. And the rest is just going to be pretty much Paris. The hotel and the activities in Paris, the family stay is free. And as you know, we have the kids coming in October here, so there's a lot of excitement building up. Those kids who are going to also, France are coming actually in November, in October. Just a few weeks from now, October 20th till November 1st. So they are very excited to be here for Halloween, which they don't have over there in France. They don't celebrate that. So, so that's the way. And again, last time we did that was 2019. So it's exciting that we have that back. So kids coming, it's going to be busy. Ten days here and I thank you, Mrs. Shortz, for allowing this because there's going to be some interruption at the school but I think it's all, I think, you know, worthwhile. We are going to be also taking some, adding some field trips, so we'll be out of the way in a few days. And if you want to see that, I will share that. I'm still working on the details of it but it should be ready this week. So I'd be happy to share it with you and then you can share it to the board or I can show you that schedule to you as well. So you see what we're going to be going, doing. But it's going to be intense, ten days. And so the same in France. So I think that's, and then we have USAF. And this is kind of exciting because USAF had the extended stay, remember? So extended stay is when we, we have the kids stay longer than the two weeks. And this year I had a lot of requests for that, so I'm really excited for that. And so I had a meeting actually with Dr. Bauck, we have met the superintendent of the school, remember? You met a few years back. And I was in a meeting with him last, with him last week online because we had to be on the dates for the kids to go and stay in France. So we're going to have them leave after they wanted to attend graduation. So they're actually going to leave right after graduation and they are going to extend their stay till July. But in France, everything closes like mid-July. So that's why the superintendent wanted to be part of this meeting because he doesn't want this, our kids to stay beyond mid-July, July 12. Originally, I wanted this to be eight weeks but we had to reduce it by the week. So the French are going to come for six, seven weeks next spring. And our kids will go back for seven weeks again. We are on the same basis. And pretty much basically only for the cost of the flight. So seven weeks and Paris stay. So it's the same thing. It doesn't add any cost for them because it's an exchange. So the kids come here, they stay with the families for seven weeks. And they will come for, for after spring break, basically May and, and, yes, April, sorry, and May. And then they go back together to France and then our kids come back in July. So they are willing to take time, time on their vacation to do that, so which is kind of cool. And so this is the extended stay. And this is the first time this year, we have so many kids wanting to go. We have seven of them who want to do that this year. So in the past, we have had three, four. And so I was not sure, that's another reason we had to discuss with Mrs. Shortz, she put it so many. But at the same time, it's the right, it's the right timing for most of them, ninth or 10th grade because then they wait too long, then there are AP classes and plus the French only do this exchange with 10th graders. So H-wise is the best time to do it. So it's kind of exciting. So we're working really hard to get them, get them both ready for that long exchange. But they're exciting. So we're working really hard to get them, get them ready for that exchange, but they're excited.
I would be happy to motion to approve the French trip in June 2024.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed? Okay, great. We're approved, and thank you very much again for all the hard work you put into getting this organized. It's quite, quite a special event. Our students are very lucky to have that opportunity.
I'll be there for them. I know. I've mentioned many times, when I was the age, I, that's what I wanted to do. So and those who don't want, that's okay, you know, that's not for everyone. But I think it's for language, it makes the language more aligned than just classroom experience. Thank you again for your support over the years. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you want to, middle schoolers also, the Jake and French one, or?
Yes, actually, you know, this group is actually, most of them going a, going maybe younger than whoever had in the past, but it's because I've noticed in the last years, the kids tend to take the language younger, which I think is good. We have less, I have less, you know, older students. So we are doing the exchange now with slightly younger kids, which I think is good because those who really want to then excel, they have, then they have a chance to do that after they are back from their trip. And, you know, they, they don't want, they don't, they live to wait until they have a junior or a senior year to do that. So I think it's all good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, board comments. Why don't we start this way?
Sure. I just, heads up that we have November seventh, two different ballot issues. One for Bond Project for the existing beautiful school facility, to keep it beautiful and usable. And then the other is the renewal of our sinking fund. Much more communication will now start to go out to the community. Now we got kids back in school and people are getting into their routines. We'll be meeting with different booster groups and PTOs and other groups in town, hosting a couple of community forums. And as mentioned earlier, absentee ballots go out later this week, and the vote is on November seventh. So much more information will start to be coming out this, starting this week. Please remember to vote no later than November seventh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madame Bealock, for taking kids.
Thank you.
For new adventures. And Terry and Jen, thank you for what you do with the fourth graders at that school. And a lot of our elementary teachers take kids on special trips. It infects them. They remember when. So that's cool. Thanks.
I wanted to just kind of expand on the fourth grade trip. A good friend of mine, we go out to lunch a couple of times, is a grandparent of a fourth grader and his wife chaperoned the trip. And he had lunch, you know, he was just giving me a little grief about they haven't even been in school and you're giving them a, a free day? Yeah, so he's just kind of ribbing me a little bit. And then he just went on to just rave about the experience that the kids had and how good it was to start the year that way, like you said. Thank you to the student reps. Appreciate, we always love hearing from the students on what's happening around school. It's nice to have you back. Thank you, Mrs. B, for your presentation, and also, Ms. Bealock, for doing what you do for the kids. And I just want to mention what a great job the administration staff has done. I've only heard great things about the start of the school year. So I know it's been a while, but it's been a while since we had a meeting.
Thank you, Steve. I will echo all that, and I'd also like to, our two young presenters did a very nice job. If there was, if there was somebody that was actually watching our meeting for the first time and learning about North Muskegon schools, I'm guessing after today, they would be pretty glad that they chose to come to North Muskegon. Lots of good information, and you can really see the energy and all the great things that happen at our school. So it would've been a good meeting for somebody to see today.
Thanks, Will. Yeah, excellent. It opened to the school year. Appreciate and echo everything that was set up to this point. I also want to send out kudos to the admin team for addressing some rumors that have happened early in the school year. I think that, you know, everything needs to be taken seriously. I think there was swift action and communication. You know, the top priority is keeping our students safe in a safe learning environment. So I'm having, I'm happy that it wasn't anything more than what was said and that it was followed through well and within, you know, a well-oiled process, so to speak.
I'm just going to agree with everything else. But I want to specifically ask you, Cherry, to please tell the students that we said thank you. And we are hearing from them, and I always regret when they leave before we're finished with the board comments. I have to learn to speak up earlier. So please, please convey that. I'm sure you would have anyway. And the other thing is that the NEF grants are out. And we had an exciting round, and we were able to grant more than we ever had before. And follow the Facebook page, there'll be some, have been, will be updates. And I'm sure our Pride, oh, Norris Pride magazine, we always have stuff in that too. So share that with, with everybody. And we're hoping that we're going to have even more and better grants next year. So although we're looking at one of our bases. So, and thank you for, I mean, we support you, but you really supported us over the years too. So, you know, you're not the only one, but you say it.
I would echo everything that's been said, especially that, I mean, this was a great meeting to have student presentations back and student reps back to hear from you guys. It's really our favorite part. It really is. And I'm really happy that the language experiences are back. I think that is such a great opportunity for the kids, not only just to grow in their language, but just to experience, you know, everything that they do in a different country. I think it's really great. So I'm really, really happy for that. And yeah, this, this was a great meeting. And thank you, Sue, for making sure that we are all...
Heart safe?
Heart safe and, and, yeah, and this has been my favorite meeting in a long time.
We are the only one in the state that has had multiple, what do I want to say? Rec- recognition for what we do here in school. That's pretty special.
Well, it's mostly because of you, so thank you.
You're welcome.
This was a great meeting. It's a terrible meeting to the last for more comments because there's not a lot extra to say. I'd also like to thank the kids, big and little, for coming. They did such a great job. I know they were nervous at first, but God love them. They are so good. They did a great job. Thanks, Mrs. B, for the, all your work with the AED. Thank you, Madame, for all you do for the kids. I think that, like, getting to travel and getting out of your little corner of the world is like one of the most impactful, like gratifying things like a human can do. And it's just really special that you are able to make it affordable and like really open that door for more of our students. So I really appreciate that. I feel like I'm probably forgetting something, but it's just been a great start to the year, and I love you guys.
If you guys have any other comments, you always get the chance to comment too as a board rep.
I was just going to say, I think the fourth grade field trips are important because I just think they're, I'm going with this Fort Meyer, who's my fourth grade teacher. It's a camp I live on. So I love seeing that. Something similar about the French trip, I was one of the last groups to go before COVID. It's very impactful and very, you know, eye-opening as a, a young student to do. It's very impressive.
Thank you very much, everybody. Sounds like everyone's unanimous that this was a very enjoyable meeting. Thanks for everybody that helped for that. We are adjourned, and we'll see everybody again sometime soon.
Thanks, you, the morning.